Quite delayed. Roll call of the members, Councilor Janino. Here. Here, Councilor Guanasso.
Yeah.
Here, Councilor McKenna.
Here.
Here, Councilor Vaselski.
Here.
Here, Councilor Powers.
Yeah.
Here, Councilor Rotundo. Is absent. Councilor Serino.
Here.
Here, Councilor Visconti.
Yeah.
Here, Councilor Zambudo.
This city clerk missed me.
Here.
Councilor Morabito.
Here.
Here, Councilor Zambudo.
Here.
Here, and Council President Keith.
Here.
Here, Coram, Mr. President.
The approval of the journal, right, correct, Madam Clerk?
They're fine. I thought you were gonna skip to the other item. Calendar item number two, approval of the Journal of the Regular Meeting of November 23rd, 2020.
So move.
So what is... Madam Clerk, I know that we have a very, uh, a great presentation by, um, School Committee Woman Ty and presentation of the George Colaula Award, but I do have one of the department heads asking, because he has a certificate to grant, that if he could go first, so that he can grant the certificate and move on. So if we could take up item number four first, and then get back to the school.
Sure. Counselor Keith, I actually have the language of the certificate here. I wasn't sure if Olivia's Organics was going to be present, and it was going to be mailed. So if you would like, I can read that, or...
Yeah, Olivia's Organic, Anita is, I believe it's Anita, is present. If we can, uh, and Mark Silvestri, the Department of, uh, Director of Veteran Services is on. So Mark Silvestri, you wish to just talk about your certification, or your award?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, Council. Sorry, Ms. Ty, I apologize. I just wanna recognize Olivia's Gardens as a small community that has gone above and beyond for the last few years for our veterans in the city. Every month, they come with enough salads, um, and drop them off. They deliver 7:30 in the morning, they're there when we do our food bank, and each veteran gets a fresh, um, delivery from them. Also, they have gone above and beyond, I think this year, when so many small businesses are being hit very hard. The donations that they give continue, and not only have those donations continued, um, they stepped it up this year, and they are getting veterans jackets, um, and children of veterans in need gifts for the holiday. So, um, without any further ado, I think the motion should speak for itself. Alita and Olivia Salads, I thank you so much, and it's an honor, um, having you as a partner in the community.
Thank you, Mark, and I know a few councils wish to speak. Councilor Zambudo and Counselor Visconti. Councilor Zambudo? I'm gonna jump off. Councilor Visconti, you can go first, and we'll look for Tony.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. Uh, I've had the, uh, pleasure of, uh, assisting, uh, at times with those, uh, offloads, uh, for the food bank, and you can always count, like, uh, Mr. Silvestri said, on, uh, Olivia's, uh, organic, uh, part of that. And, uh, I wanna say congratulations, thank you for being a partner, and, uh, it's great to see local companies, uh, assisting our community. You do a great job, keep up the work, and, uh, thank you again. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, and Councilor Visconti, Councilor Zambudo, do you wish to speak? No? Maybe not. So, um, Alita, I see you're on, welcome. You're on mute. You're on mute, Alita.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you so much, we are so honored for this recognition, and, um, you know, I speak for everybody at Olivia's Organics. We think what you all do for the veterans is amazing. And we are just so proud and honored to be able to support any efforts we can. We appreciate being included, and we will continue to support our great veterans as much as possible. So thank you so much.
On behalf of the Council, Alita, and, uh, of course, the Director of Veteran Services, we wanna thank you, and it's funny, because I just had my wife poke into the refrigerator, and we have some of your wonderful product right here. It truly is a really good product, and we are, um, extremely grateful for how generous your company is to the city of Revere, and I will go out of my way, not that I have to, because they're in all the major supermarkets, to buy your products, so thank you.
Well, we appreciate that, and again, that we're honored to be a part of all these wonderful things that you're doing for our veterans, so thank you, and, uh, we'll continue to support any way we can.
And if you could just, uh, send, uh, the clerk your proper address, and we'll be happy to present that certificate to you, and, uh, drop it off, or send it in the mail.
Okay, great. Thanks again.
Thank you very much, have a great night.
You too.
Next item on the agenda, calendar item number three. Carol Ty, Chairwoman of the George V. Colaula Academic Achievement Awards, will introduce this year's highest achieving students and their principals.
I'm Chairwoman, Madam Ty, School Committee Woman Ty. And I know there's a number of, um, teachers, principals, and faculty, as well as some students. Will, uh, as you're introduced, we'll add you to the screen, uh, because if we add you all, then it might be just too many. So, uh, Madam Clerk will add you as, uh, Madam Ty reaches out to your respective award. This time.
Thank you, thank you so much, and thank you for, uh, being always supportive of this ceremony. The Colaula Awards are part of the legacy of George V. Colaula, who served the city of Revere, uh, as a member of the school committee, on the city council, and as mayor. As a matter of fact, one of the longest-serving mayors in the history of the Commonwealth. But no matter where he served, George Colaula kept the children of the Revere Public Schools in the forefront of his mind. He had been educated in the Revere Public Schools, a graduate of Revere High School in the class of 1945, and he was the president of his class. He married his high school classmate, June Murphy, and they had three girls, all of whom were educated throughout their career in the Revere Public Schools. And so George Colaula was always concerned about education. Now, over the years, we in Revere have had a real, really difficult time supporting our schools financially, still do. But there's never been enough money to give our students everything that they deserve. But in the really rough times, there was a city joke that some of you will remember, that George Colaula always had a bottom drawer of reserve funds, and more often than not, the extra cash went to the schools. So tonight's awards are part of George Colaula's legacy, which can still be identified throughout the city. When the pandemic is over, I hope the youngsters who are winning this award will visit City Hall, go in the front door, and read the Colaula plaque. That is part of George Colaula's memorial. But he knew that the best memorial a public servant can have is one that makes a difference in people's lives. So he enacted policies and procedures, uh, to do just that. He also built schools, and he always looked to the future. He provided in his will the finances to support this award. Each of the winners gets a check for $200 toward whatever it is that he or she wants to enrich their lives. Mayor Colaula passed away in 2010, and in 2011, we began giving these awards to a top student in our elementary and middle schools. A total of 90 awards in the amount so far of $18,000. They are given for academic excellence and good citizenship. Some of the award winners have had siblings who previously won, and others are paving the way. Two of them won also, two of the middle school winners won also in the, in the fifth grade. That was Kendall Giordano and Safa LaRusi. I wanna say congratulations to all of them and to their families. They make us all Revere proud. Thank you.
Kendall's on.
If we could do one principal and the student which they are representing at a time, uh, that would be, we have about 48 panelists, and it would just be easier to manage if,
Okay.
the student and the principal would raise their hand, and then I can start their video.
Excellent.
Um, so who would, uh, who is the first student? There we go. We have Superintendent Kelly. Let's see. So we'll start with the fifth graders first? Who's the first? Okay.
Beechmont School, please.
So that would be, uh, Dr. Percy Napier.
Hello.
Percy. And, uh, and the student that he's gonna honor today is Samiak Maharajan.
Correct.
Got him.
Well, thank you. Is Samiak on? I saw him in the, in the chat, okay.
He's on.
Okay. Well, before I begin, I wanna thank Ms. Ty, the mayor and the city council, for continuing this wonderful tradition, um, especially during these difficult times for our city. And I also wanna thank my fifth grade teachers, Ms. Anderson, Ms. Katib, and, um, Ms. Katib and Ms. Merchant, for all their hard work with our students in preparing them to be such great students. As you can see, we have two students, a former Beechmont student, and our current student, Kendall Giordano as well. Um, she's a former Beechmont student as well, but, um, it is my distinct pleasure to introduce, um, the Colaula Award winner for this year for Beechmont School. Um, that is Samiak Maharajan. And one of the reasons why I enjoy this day is that it allows us to look into the future. Here with us today are our future doctors, lawyers, business moguls, and innovators. We are today seeing the beginning of greatness, and Samiak is a prime example of the awesome possibilities our students have in store. Um, I remember Samiak's first day as, at the Beechmont School. He transferred in, um, from Cambridge as a curious third grader, very quiet. However, it quickly became apparent that this young man was going to be remarkable. His teachers state that not only is he an inquisitive and hard-working student, he motivates and pushes others to work hard and challenge themselves academically. He is the definition of integrity and leads by example by encouraging others to make good choices and do the right thing. He, Samiak is a straight A student. On, um, the most recent MCAS assessment, he scored the highest levels on both the ELA and math test, and he was consistently one of the highest scores on the interim meeting, uh, reading and math assessments administered by the district. His favorite subject is math, because he loves the challenge of solving problems, especially in algebra. He's also a fantastic writer. I have been personally enthralled by reading some of his creative and very thoughtful essays. However, um, this kid is what I like to call all-around awesome. He speaks three languages, English, Nepali, and Nwari, and he recently started to learn to play the piano. He's also a really good artist, and he enjoys sketching in his free time. After graduating from high school, Samiak would like to attend Harvard University, where he would like to study business and software engineering in his efforts to, um, become a tech entrepreneur and design, market, and sell the next big tech innovation. As you can see, he is well on his way to realizing some very big dreams. Congratulations, Samiak, on being this year's Colaula winner. We are so proud of you.
Congratulations.
Awesome.
Can we get him on?
Sure.
He's here.
Sammy?
Hi. Hello, everybody.
Congratulations.
Uh, thank you.
And Ms. Ty will be mailing certificates and awards to the students directly at home, correct?
Correct.
Yep. Great.
Don't celebrate too hard tonight, Sammy, all right? Enjoy your evening.
Just keep up all the good, all the great work.
That's, that's right. Ms. Ty, we have the, uh, there's another representative from that school? No? Okay. Who's next?
I think the next school would be the Garfield Elementary with, uh, Mr. Corbit Coots and Justin Cavalcanti.
Hello, good evening. Uh, my name is Corbit Coots, I'm the proud principal of the Garfield Elementary School. I wanna thank, uh, the city council, and Mayor Orego, and Dr. Kelly, and School Committee time, uh, Member Ty, uh, for this amazing award opportunity for our students. I also wanna thank our grade five teachers, in particular, Mrs. Brinkel and Ms. Correa, and all of our amazing teachers at the Garfield Elementary School. Uh, all the, all the teachers play an important role, uh, in our students' success. And there's actually an eighth grader who will be receiving an award tonight, Safa, who is a former, uh, Garfield Elementary School student, so congratulations, Safa. Um, so Justin, who was on the, the call with us here tonight, uh, is a confident student who is always up for a challenge. He's passionate about math and science and full of questions. His curiosity of the world and how things work is what drives him to delve deeper and excel in any assignment. Justin proved his ability to persevere last year in his writing. He debated Mrs. Brinkel's endless feedback and grew as a writer. And this was proven when he won honorable mention in the Boston Sports Museum's Will McDonough Writing Contest.
Oh.
In addition to his academic achievements, his most notable characteristic, characteristic is Justin's willingness to help others. He's always eager to solve a problem when it arises and jumps at the opportunity to give support to his peers and teachers whenever they need it. Justin comes from a wonderful family, and his parents are always involved with the school. He is a very sweet older brother to his little sister, who is in grade two at the Garfield Elementary School. I'm sure that Justin is contributing to, is continuing to achieve great things this year at Ramneem Marsh Academy, and we are all confident that he will be successful throughout his school career in everything he does in life. Congratulations, Justin.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Justin.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Coots.
Great work. Uh, next, we have from the Hill School, Principal Lomas. And the award winner from the Hill School is Ashraf Bukheru.
Hi, I'm Melissa, I'm from the Hill School. Um, Ashraf's name is also my name, and he has a little airplane as his avatar, if you're looking for him. I don't know if he'll unmute for... Fantastic.
We got him here.
Excellent. Um, so it's with great pleasure that I'm able to introduce to you this evening, Ashraf Bukheru, um, who's the Hill School recipient of the George Colaula Award for the 2019-20 school year. Um, I personally have some really, really, really special memories of Ashraf, um, as he was, I think maybe the third student to welcome me on my first day at the Hill School as the new principal. Um, he approached me with confidence and kindness, extended a hand to me, welcomed me. Um, and I don't think he realizes this, but that meant the world to me that day, because I was really nervous, and he kinda set me at ease, and I think that that just speaks volumes about who Ashraf is. Um, he's just that kind of person who goes out of his way to make sure that people around him feel welcomed and comfortable in any space that he's in. Um, and he does all of it with kindness and generosity. Uh, when I asked him why he thought he earned this award, um, like, "How come you're so good at school, Ashraf?", uh, he said that the key to his success was to always put forth his best effort. Uh, he stressed that paying attention and participating are also important if you're going to succeed in any classroom. And finally, and the point that I thought was really the most important of what he said, um, was that he always asks for help when he needs it, and he's never afraid to ask for help, and I think that that's a, that's a really important attribute. So I think those are excellent pieces of advice for everyone, not just for students looking to be successful. I also think another key to Ashraf's success is that his favorite part of school is learning new things, uh, because it makes him happy to acquire new knowledge. He really understands that the gift of knowledge, uh, like what the gift of knowledge is, um, and he works hard to get it. Ashraf wants to be an airplane pilot when he grows up and finishes his schooling. This is of interest to him, because he really enjoys planes, and he also understands that there's a lot of mathematics involved in learning to be a pilot, and he's very confident with his mathematics skills. So I'm eager to someday be a passenger on one of his flights. Congratulations, Ashraf, um, on being the Hills Colaula Award recipient this year.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you so much.
You're welcome so much. Congratulations, Ashraf.
Thank you.
The next recipient is from the Lincoln School, and we can welcome Principal Mrs. Humus Tracy and Amy Paneda Mahia.
Good evening, city council members, Mayor Orego, Ms. Ty. Thank you for the opportunity to celebrate one of our star students. We are so excited, um, and it is with great pleasure that I introduce Amy Paneda Mahia, um, the Lincoln School, um, Colaula Award winner for the 2019-2020 school year. Amy is an absolute model student, um...
I follow. How much longer is this gonna go on?
She, I'll be super quick. Um, her, her teachers describe her as sweet, kind, and quiet. She's very, very academically gifted, she has excellent work habits, she never rushes through her assignments and always does her best work. She readily applies, um, the strategies she's taught, and is always willing to help and will often assist other students, um, in class after completing her own work. She would come to school, particularly to Ms. Magno's department nights with a few friends to read and do homework, and join in department night lessons or play board games. She has a wonderful attitude, and is just an all-around amazing person. Um, we are especially proud of Amy as she was able to excel during a particularly challenging year, and we look forward to hearing about her future successes, of which we know there will be many. Congratulations, Amy.
Congratulations. Amy?
Hi.
Anything to say, Amy?
Um, not really much, other than thank you.
Well, you're welcome. And, uh, for everyone watching, we have all night, so take your time. Anyone that, uh, doesn't wanna be here doesn't have to be, but we have all night, so let's celebrate these kids.
That's right. Well said, Mr. President. Um, our next recipient is from the Paul Revere School, and I'm gonna welcome, uh, Principal Mrs. Bonnerigo, who's gonna talk to us about their recipient, Lena Lee. Ashley, can you see if you have Donna Bonnerigo?
Yes, let's see, oh, she was in attendees list, I just promoted her, and I see Lena. All right, great.
All right, I think I'm in, yes?
There you are.
Yes.
Ah, wonderful, thank you. Thank you, uh, everyone. Thank you, Ms. Ty, Dr. Kelly, Mayor Orego, city councilors, for this opportunity to recognize these outstanding, uh, students this evening. I'd like to take notice to thank our teachers at the Paul Revere School, the LA fifth grade teachers, Mrs. Bonfilio, Mrs. Grassi, Ms. Kossman, and Mr. Budman, and all of the teachers, um, who enable our students to excel. Um, I'm delighted to present the Mayor George V. Colaula Academic Achievement Awards, Lena Lee. The first line of the Paul Revere creed is, quote, "I am a student seeking to be a scholar," end quote. And Lena truly is a scholar. In addition, Lena is the two-time Paul Revere Spelling Bee champion, defeating some tough competition, including her sisters. At the regional spelling bee in March 2019, Lena made it all the way to the fifth round, and I am sure she would have exceeded that achievement had the spelling bee taken place in 2020. Besides her scholarly accomplishments, Lena is a wonderful friend, reaching out especially to those in need of a friend. A wonderful role model for other students, she is a terrific big sister to Leona and Lana. We at Paul Revere wish we could take credit for Lena's tremendous work ethic, but we know that recognition properly belongs to her first teachers, her parents. We wish Lena all the best at Ramneem Marsh Academy and in all her future endeavors, and we congratulate her on receiving the Colaula Award. We're so proud of you, Lena.
Congratulations, Lena.
Thank you so much. I couldn't have done it without the support of my teachers and my principal at my elementary school.
Well said. Thank you.
Okay, our next recipient hails from the A.C. Wayland Elementary School. Um, and to present the award to Nyla Vranek, we have, uh, both Mrs. Flynn, the former principal, and Mr. Phillips, the current principal.
I believe Nyla is under my name as a second person.
We see her.
Okay, perfect, thank you. Um, thank you very much, Ms. Ty, as well as the city council, and everyone that has worked so hard over the years to ensure that the George V. Colaula Award is able to be given to each and every one of the recipients. Um, this year, Nyla Vranek is the Wayland School Award recipient. She's an outstanding, thoughtful, and well-rounded student. She embodies the characteristics of the recipient of the Colaula Award. She's always worked very hard and earned a rating of advanced in both her math and her ELA and MCAS assessments, and was one of the highest scorers at the Wayland in both her ELA and Math Mastery Connect assessments. Nyla strives to excel in academics, and she also takes an active role in her school. Last year, Nyla was a homeroom representative on the Wayland School Council. She truly and genuinely embodies and embraces the seven habits of happy kids, from being proactive with her coursework, putting first things first, energizing with her classmates, synergizing with her classmates, and of course, taking time to shop in the saw. Even though it feels like just yesterday that Nyla walked through the Wayland School doors for the first time as a kindergartner in Ms. Piccadachi's class, she is currently a Garfield Middle School student, and she continues to share her love for dancing with others. She loves to dance, she's been learning tap, jazz, ballet, hip-hop, just to name a few. She also likes to draw and make handmade crafts for her family and friends. For Mother's Day, she made a treasured drawing for her mom. When she grows up, she hopes to be either a teacher or a designer. Mr. Phillips, the current A.C. Wayland principal, will say a few words from her teachers.
Thank you, Ms. Flynn. Uh, as Ms. Flynn has shared, I am newest principal at Wayland this year, and I've only met Nyla through the words and stories of her teachers. Please allow me to share some of what they have said. Uh, the first thing that they mentioned, and this was consistent from teacher to teacher, was that Nyla was always smiling. She makes the choice to see joy in a situation, and that she is warm and open in sharing that joy. As one teacher said, she was a pure delight to have in class. The second thing that they mentioned was how hard she worked, that she always wanted to do more, that she was driven to get as much learning as possible from every opportunity that was presented to her. As one teacher said, "What sticks in my mind is the difference between ordinary and extraordinary is the extra." And she took that to heart and always gave extra. She would continually ask teachers how she could take her work to the next level, and invariably, Nyla would take her teachers' feedback and push beyond even those expectations. Finally, despite all of her achievements and strong performance, her teachers noted Nyla's humility. She was not driven by accolades, but by her own inner compass. And while her teachers recognized Nyla's achievements, they are perhaps more impressed with her character, her self-motivation, and her work ethic. As one teacher noted, she will go on to do great things. So with great respect from our faculty, we are thrilled to have selected Nyla Vranek to receive and represent the A.C. Wayland, the George V. Colaula Award.
Congratulations, Nyla.
That's great. And will we move right on to the eighth grade?
Yes.
Okay, all right. So we'll start with the Garfield Middle School, and I'll, Principal Mr. Pachinski is going to speak about the recipient from Garfield, Kendall Giordano.
All right, am I able to unmute her? Am I being heard?
We can hear you.
All right, all right, great. It's, I don't have the video either, but uh, thank you very much. I, you know, appreciate the opportunity, and thank you for the council, and Mayor Rego, and Ms. Thai, and Dr. Kelly. It's my pleasure and honor to be here tonight, albeit I wish it was in person, that we could say all this and recognize the hard work, dedication, commitment that all these students have shown at the elementary and the middle school levels. Now, at the Garfield Middle School, we adhere to the code of respect, responsibility, and relationships. So I'm still trying to get that video off, but it's not, it doesn't seem to be working for me. But tonight's recipient, Kendall Giordano, certainly demonstrates all three of those traits. But I'd also like to point out that this is the second time that she's earning this award. But on top of maintaining the high academic achievement throughout her middle school career, she was an active contributing member to the Garfield Middle School community. She played piano and guitar in the GMS Rock Ensemble. She was a member of the Aspirers, and also served as a peer tutor. Now Kendall's hard work, determination, and willingness to help others can also be heard in the number of comments that former teachers had to say about her when I asked about her. This is from Ms. Lanza. Kendall is super respectful and kind. She helped her classmates whenever they needed help. And from Ms. Bonapane, Kendall strives for excellence, extremely hardworking. She is the best kid. And finally, this is from Ms. Gambali. Kendall is not only a great student, she is an amazing person. She would always take the time to help her classmates who are struggling and always had a positive attitude. She's kind and respectful. She's an incredible student and a person, and it was an honor having her as a student at GMS. And again, I have to agree with all of these sentiments and these thoughts. Kendall is currently attending Revere High School, where I know she's going to continue demonstrating great success. And again, it's my pleasure and honor to award this year's George Colella, the tenth year, annual to Kendall Giordano. So congratulations, Kendall.
Thank you.
Is that all you have, Kendall? This is your second time up here. Congratulations. Your parents should be very proud.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next recipient is from Rummy Marsh Academy, and that's Safa LaRusi. And the former principal, Dr. Galucci, is going to speak on behalf of Safa. But I also want to recognize Mrs. Bob, who is the current principal at Rummy Marsh Academy, who's also here with us tonight.
Thank you, Dr. Kelly, and I just wanted to say congratulations to the, if I have not lost count, one, two, three, four current Rummy students who received the awards as fifth graders last year.
Hello, everyone. Thank you for having me. I'm not able to get the video started. I'm not sure why. I think it's preventing me. So thank you, everyone. Thank you for giving us this opportunity to present the RMA's 2019-2020 George V. Colella Award winner. I always look forward to this evening, and this student perhaps made it more exciting than ever. Safa LaRusi, a current ninth grader at Revere High School. We'd like to name and congratulate you as this year's George V. Colella Award winner. As Ms. Thai and Mr. Koot said, this is Safa's second time in earning this honor. She was part of this very ceremony in 2017. During her middle school tenure, I had the honor and pleasure to get to know Safa during her three years at the Rummy Marsh Academy. In that time, she was an incredible student, leader, and community member. And I'm hard pressed, this is my sixth award, and I can't remember someone who did as much outside of the classroom as they did inside of the classroom as Safa. Safa excelled in academics, of course, across all of her subjects, and still found time to serve as a regular at all of our school events and community gatherings. She had the highest academic ranking in our entire school and received a ton of exceeds or advanced ratings on standardized tests throughout her academic tenure. And speaking to some of her teachers, they eagerly submitted words about her accomplishments while at the RMA. They said, "During her time at the RMA, Safa showed excellence in all academics and a wisdom far beyond her years. She is the natural leader whose positive example enriches the community around her. In her ELA class, her cheerful presence and sense of humor lifted spirits each day. There were many times that her thoughtful and reflective participation in class discussions helped other students see issues from a new perspective. In her writing, she explored new and groundbreaking ideas and worked ceaselessly to perfect each argument. Safa was consistently an asset to our class community, and I know she will continue to contribute positively to the world wherever she goes. As she does now, Safa stood out from her peers, impressing me with her humor, artistry, openness, and intelligence. We know that Safa excelled in her middle school classes. She wouldn't be getting this award if she didn't. She is the student who volunteered at every parent-teacher conference. She is the student who stayed after school to help her friends, even though she completed her work during class. She is a wonderful collaborator and enthusiastic participant during class discussions. Her work ethic was second to none, and it is clear that she has boundless potential. Even when the current pandemic hit, it was Safa who campaigned to do more remote Zoom sessions, even though they were not a requirement for the students at the time. She is more than deserving of this award, and I look forward to her bright future, as we all do. Safa enjoys socializing with her friends, playing piano, and exploring all facets of STEM. Safa was recently accepted to MGH's Youth Scholars Program, dedicated to those looking to enter the world of medical or STEM fields. Safa hopes to further her education at an Ivy League school or locally at MIT. We are so proud of all that you've accomplished and look forward to what awaits you in your bright future." Thank you.
Congratulations, Safa.
There's my video.
Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Congratulations.
And the final Colella Award is being awarded to a student from the Susan B. Anthony School. And here to speak on behalf of the recipient, Glenn Kuhl, is Mrs. Willett, Principal Willett.
All right. Good evening. I don't think I can turn my camera on, but that's okay. Oh, there we go. All right. So good evening. Thank you, Dr. Kelly, Ms. Thai, members of the City Council. It's always an honor to be here at the City Council to present the George V. Colella Academic Awards, and it's certainly an honor tonight to be here to present it to Glenn Kuhl. When thinking about Glenn Kuhl, there is not an easy place to start with accolades. This is because there are so many wonderful things to say about him. Not only is he smart, he earned the George Colella Award. So obviously, he's a bright young man and a good student. He is also really engaged in the world around him. When he was in sixth grade, he worried about his fellow students in the propensity to go home and play video games, speaking about how important it is to get in some exercise every day. Glenn also volunteered for many events while at the SBA, the most recent being our evening presentation about vaping, where he worked at the door escorting parents into the auditorium and spoke with us about questions for his future, which school would be the best fit for him, and put him on the right path to the life he wants. Glenn is always kind to other students. He is willing to lend a hand to those in need and respects those who have knowledge he is seeking. Many days after school, Glenn would still be in the building, having meaningful conversations with his teachers and a few other students. No matter where Glenn goes, his journey will be fueled by his thirst for knowledge, his desire to help others, and his remarkable drive. Congratulations, Glenn.
Thank you for this opportunity. I'm going to make sure that I continue to do what I've always done, work hard, and, you know, do that all throughout high school.
Thank you. So, Glenn, if I can say something, Ms. Willett, as you may or may not know, Glenn is a frequent at my home. He's very good friends with my son, and he's a wonderful, wonderful young man, from a wonderful family, and he is a very, very hard worker, extremely. Very proud of Glenn, and all of the recipients.
Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you to the City Council for hosting this award ceremony. You're very gracious with your time and with your devotion to the kids. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Thai.
And if I could just close by saying, reminding all of the recipients that what we hope they will do is return to Revere after they finish college, and when they're successful, and come back and give back and help us with the next generation of Revere students.
Great idea.
And for those watching, and as we're going to go into the next piece, thank you to the school department, Superintendent Kelly, former Superintendent Carol Ty, and the many principals and teachers, the administrators that came on tonight. One thing for the students watching, and maybe some of their friends, is I wrote down some words that were repeated often about the tributes, sorry, the traits of these students. Hard work, persistence, attitude, goodwill, humility, and character. Those are traits that you don't just use in school. You will use those your entire life to be successful. Congratulations. Great work. You're going to represent us well, and thank you very much.
Thank you.
Nicely said. Thank you.
Right. Next in order of business, Madam Plurk.
Next item on the agenda, calendar item number five. Scott Schaffenberg, Executive Director of Roca, Massachusetts, and Joseph Fenari, Director of Roca Chelsea. And Lynn will provide the City Council with a yearly update on Roca.
Evening, Council. Congratulations to all the students that received the Colella Award tonight. My name's Scott Schaffenberg, and I'm the Executive Director of Roca, Massachusetts. I oversee our operations of our Massachusetts sites located in Austin, Chelsea, Polio, Lynn Springfield, and coordinate our state's engaged institutions work. Thank you for adding Roca to the agenda tonight to discuss and update you on some of the work we do in the city of Revere and the state of Massachusetts. I present a really quick overview of what Roca does and a quick COVID update. And my colleague, Joe Fenari, will talk about some of Roca's work in the city of Revere. We can answer any questions you may have. As many as you know, our model is a four-year model based on behavior change. The first two years consist of intense relationship building and programming, and the last two years are focused on employment sustainability. At Roca, we work with Irish young men and mothers that assistance involved. The young people we work with are primarily seventeen to twenty-four years of age. The majority of young men have been formerly incarcerated or had some interactions with law enforcement. And the majority of young mothers are involved with multiple systems with no formal education, minimal work experience, and experienced significant trauma. Our Roca model consists of four components. First, we create safety and stability. Roca is most known for our reputation of being relentless in our outreach of young people, so much that young people claim we borderline stalk them. The intensity of our team's relentless outreach of young people actually catches their attention. Most other agencies have given up on them when Roca refuses to. Takes youth worker an average of ten relentless efforts to even find a young person, and it can take hundreds of attempts until they make it to our programs. We've come to learn that deep and meaningful relationships can support young people and push them over time to make critical changes in their lives. By creating transformational relationships, staff are able to have hard conversations about substance use, getting rid of a gun, and everything else you can imagine that is life or death. Second, we teach lifesaving skills to young people. At Roca, our teams use a simple version of CBT, Cognitive Behavioral Theory, with young people. This version of CBT can be used in any setting, helps slow down young people, and may be triggered, and helps them put a pause in the way they think, feel, and do. We want to help young people disrupt their negative cycles caused by trauma and take back control of their thoughts and minds. We also use CBT as a common language throughout the organization. We use the same techniques in our daily lives to change the way we think, feel, and do. Not only must this be mastered to work with our young people, but it helps staff with self-care. Third, practice skills, relapse, and repeat. We understand that the young people we work with need spaces to change, relapse, and then change even more. We've created tailored education, employment, and life skill programs to create these spaces that allow for the relapse. This is never easy, many times hard, but our teams are trained in supporting their relapse by using CBT. Lastly, engaged institutions and systems work. At Roca, we identify system partners with the strongest influence over young people. They're at the center of urban violence. Once identified, we outreach them just as relentlessly as we do our young people, and then build the same transformational relationships with them. Once relationships are established with systems partners, we hope to teach them the same common CBT language we all use, which we hope helps them interact with these young people, and also assist with their own de-escalation practices. We also practice peacemaking circles with system partners to better understand and listen to each other. Next up, briefly discuss Roca's response to COVID in Massachusetts. Like the rest of the world, Roca had to pivot its work in March of this year to adjust to COVID. We quickly shut down our buildings, set up staff with proper technology, shifted to socially distanced and virtual outreach, and assessed how the young people we work with could access technology. Nine months into this epidemic now, what we believed would happen happened. Our young people spiraled deeper into poverty, distress, and increased violence. Our young mothers, who in the best of times already struggle to survive, struggle even more with social isolation, domestic violence, loss of jobs, on the edge of eviction, and babies and young children are raised. Our young men's program has seen increases in violence at all sites, both as victims and perpetrators of shootings and stabbing. Our staff are fiercely devoted to serving young people. Since June, have been back on the streets safely meeting young people where they're at. All teams are using a hybrid approach to outreach with a combination of in-person and virtual outreach. Work crews are back up and running, and young people are back into the building doing necessary programming to help them practice skills, relapse, and repeat. Our next difficult hurdle with young people will be finding jobs for them. If a group of young people are already difficult to place in jobs, now with incredibly high unemployment rates in the state, they'll have to get behind everyone else's skills and the education to achieve employment. Next up, I want to introduce Joseph Fenari, who's our Director of Roca Chelsea, and Lynn to discuss some operations.
Evening, everybody. Thank you very much for having us this evening. It's an honor to be here and a privilege to talk to the City of Revere. It's pretty amazing on this night to be even on the same agenda as the young people that were so recognized this evening. You talked earlier about, Ms. Thai had talked about the foundation that Mayor Colella had set in regards to helping young people nurture themselves in the city of Revere. Roca, we try to rebuild that foundation for young people who have been struggling, had trauma, difficulties in life, criminal justice involvement, unemployment, and basically not a place to live. We share a lot of love with these young people to help them rebuild their lives. We're very fortunate to partner with the City of Revere. We have a contract. You may see us out in the city of Revere, not as often over the past nine months due to COVID. But over the past several years, we have a contract with the City of Revere that we come out and do community service within your community. We've done a tremendous amount of work with your historical society, as well as the Department of Public Services. We recently have been engaged with a contract with the city to take over the snow angel commitment that the city has to do that. We had a great test this weekend. We thought we were going to have a big blizzard, snowstorm, fifty feet of snow. We were all ready to go. We had all our young people ready, prepared. And then I had to call them on Sunday morning and say, "False alarm, can't do it." But you know what? Our young people were ready, prepared, ready, willing, and able to get out there. Because that's what we do with these young guys and ladies. We get them ready and willing and prepared to come out into the community. They've suffered long enough. They come into our model. We spend a lot of time with them. We do a lot of CBT with them, a lot of cognitive behavior theory with them. We do a lot of healthy habits, sex education, a lot of workforce readiness. It takes a tremendous amount of commitment, relentless outreach, but our people are committed and continue to be committed with the young people out in the community. March thirteenth, when we shut down, it was pretty devastating, to be perfectly honest with you. We didn't know what we were going to be doing. But within the next twenty-four, forty-eight hours, we were up and running. We had protocols in place to go out in the community. The state deemed us essential to go out and continue the work that we do out in the cities and towns. We reached out to all of our community partners, all our police, all our fire, all our courts, all our engaged institutions that Scott spoke about. Let them know they were going out, and everybody believed in us and helped us and supported us, continued with that work. Let them know they were going out, and everybody believed in us and helped us and supported us, continued with that work. Currently, we have seventeen young men out of the Revere area and three young women that are involved in our program and our four-year model. They come into the building. Yes, we are open. We're at half population right now in the building. But we do allow them to come in, scheduled to come in to take class, I set workforce, CBT, they meet with their youth worker. But we go out in the community. We, we are running our transitional employment program. We are meeting out in the parking lot. We're practicing social distancing. I'm by myself in my office. Nobody else is in the building. That's why I'm not wearing a mask. Okay? And it's something that we preach every day to keep everybody safe. Your safety, our young person's safety, everybody is a very concerned to us. It's a safe environment for a young person to come to Roca. That's probably one of the unfortunate things that we can't do right now is leave our building open and have our young people come. They know it's a safe haven. They know they can come here. They know there's always somebody to talk to. They know there's always a hot meal. They know that we are there to support them at any given point in time. I'll leave you on a couple of things that we have been doing in our building alone, but we've been giving out, working along with the city of Chelsea, and I know Revere is just as close with the city of Chelsea. You guys had partnered in the beginning regards to bed placement with the young people out there was very truly amazing. But we've been continuing providing services to the city. At one point, we were helping the city produce over nine boxes of food, nine hundred boxes of food for the community. Okay? Pretty amazing to, to get young people to come in and do those types of things. We do a diaper distribution on Wednesdays. And anybody that's in need, we're out there to support, and we support our community. Revere has been very, very good to us, great support, great community. Really appreciate being here tonight. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Fenari. And I know there was someone looking to speak from the attendees list. Is Bianca?
President.
Counselor.
Can we just acknowledge former state rep Kathy Ann Reinstein?
I'd love to. She keeps coming in and out. There she is.
I just want to say thank you to the council for letting my incredible colleagues talk about the incredible work that's done at Roca. So thank you all so much.
Just for the record, too, she doesn't stop talking about Revere.
That's a good thing.
I believe, is this an attendee, Bianca Calucci? No? Let's try that again. And Bianca, are you there?
Yes, this is Claude Calucci.
Hi, how are you?
Good. How are you doing? I'm here on behalf of the owner of the property at one hundred Lancaster Ave. I'm the electrician. We're doing an underground service.
Hold on, sir. Is this in regards to this presentation?
What is that?
Is this in regards, is this in regards to the presentation we have right now?
No, this is for the electrical work at one hundred Lancaster.
Okay, we'll call you when that one comes up.
Okay.
The other, and there's another resident, Gency Pe, Gency? The hand raised?
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Good evening. My name is Gency Panche, and I'm the owner of one hundred Lancaster. So Claude is my.
Mr. Pancy, so this is, we're on a different subject right now. We'll call you when the Lancaster project comes up.
I'm sorry.
No worries, no worries. Thank you. All right. Any councils wish to speak on the presentation? Council Sereno?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to thank Joe, Kathy, and Scott for Roca's work in our community, particularly with regard to the Snow Angel program. That's going to be a huge help this winter. A lot of elderly people in the city were worried that given everything with the schools being closed, and you guys are filling that gap. So thank you for that, and thank you just for all the good work you guys are doing.
Thank you very much. We're more than happy to answer any questions that any council members might have. Another time, if anybody wants to set up a call or a meeting, I know it's tough to squeeze into a few minutes, but more than happy to go over our model, our data, anything that the council is looking for. So we appreciate your time tonight.
Thank you very much. Any other councillors? No? Kathy, Ms. Reinstein?
Thank you, President Keefe. Just to echo my colleague Scott, if anyone has any questions, if they even want to meet with us individually for a briefing, and maybe when it's permitted to come to one of our sites, we're happy to host you. So thank you again.
Thank you so much. We appreciate what you do.
Thank you very much. Afternoon, everybody.
Thank you.
Please on file, all in favor? Please on file.
Calendar item number six, hearing called is ordered on a petition submitted by National Grid to install underground service from one hundred Lancaster Avenue to pole number one four six one in accordance with the plan on file.
Thank you. This is a public hearing, and we're going to open it up to any proponents, any proponents on the record. I think we have two that wish to speak. Gency Pence.
Gency Panche. Yes, sir. Good evening, number one. I'm the owner of the one hundred Lancaster Ave. And we'll look into, get the service, underground service, and cut the sidewalk about four feet. So I've been working in this project. It's my dream property, actually, since a year and a half now. And actually, I live in Boston, but I've been working in Revere since two thousand. I'm a real estate broker and fell in love with the city. Thank you very much from you guys, and it's not been a note, especially working on the coronavirus time, February and March and April. I really appreciate that because some of the cities, they close. So thank you.
Thank you. And, and just if we can have your address for the record.
My address is one hundred Lancaster Ave.
Okay, thank you very much. Mr. Calucci?
Yes.
Your proponent?
Yes, I'm the electrician on this project, so planning to do an underground service. The pole, it's right next to the same side of the house, same street side. So we cut in the sidewalk about, I think it's less than thirty feet, putting underground pipe, and we're going to cover and put the sidewalk back in place. It's just a concrete sidewalk, no pavers, nothing, you know, so.
Okay.
Pretty straightforward, straightforward for us.
Thank you. And can I just have your address for the record as well?
Yes, my address is twenty-six Denmark Ave, Milton, Mass.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
And Socrates, are you a proponent?
Yes, I am. Good evening. So basically, same thing that the customer and the electrician were saying. I'm here representing National Grid. My address is one seventy Metford Street in Molden. So for this, it's just going to be an underground service from a pole on the corner, fourteen sixty-one to the house, one hundred Lancaster Ave. And the only thing that is going to be on the right away will be approximately like five feet of conduit.
Okay. Thank you. Any other proponents, any other proponents? Hearing and seeing none, we're going to close that side of the hearing. Any opponents? Any opponents in the audience? Hearing and seeing none, we're going to close that side of the hearing. Any councils wishing to speak? Council Powers?
Thank you, Mr. President. I represent the area. What is the purpose of the underground? Can you tell me that?
Yes.
The purpose.
Oh, sorry.
Mr. Calucci?
Yes, so as far as this property has a lot of balconies and a lot of windows all around the front and the side, so there is no way for us to bring overhead service to the property.
Is this the one at the corner of Rice Avenue in Lancaster?
Yes.
This is the one that's currently under construction. Am I correct?
Yes.
And have you talked to the electric inspector regarding this?
Yes, we talked and he said, go ahead.
He said, go.
Yeah, we, we talked to the wide inspector, building inspector, and the National Grid.
Okay. Well, I, I have no problem with it. If, would you do, and what is the length, approximately seventy feet, sixty feet, eighty feet? What is the length of the underground?
I believe you said it was five feet.
Five feet?
Let me, let me ask him.
It will be only five feet in the, in the right away. I'm not a hundred percent sure that distance going all the way to the house.
Yes, it's about seventeen, twenty feet, max.
Okay, so you're, you're going from, from the, from the existing pole with an underground to the house. Am I correct?
Yes.
Okay, all right. And you say it's roughly about seventeen feet?
Seventeen, twenty feet, I would say, yep.
Okay, I, I have no objection to it as the ward counselor. And Mr. Socrates?
Yes, sir.
I, I, I do have an objection with a couple of other items that I've mentioned before at the city council, and I've had no response from National Grid regarding the abatement of those issues. So I would appreciate it if you'd send a message back to National Grid that I would like to get a response to these particular two items, either from them or if you can give me a call. The city clerk can give you my phone number. I'd like to speak to you regarding that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sure. What? Sure, yeah.
So if you, if Socrates, if you want to reach out to Council Powers offline and get those issues, issues addressed immediately, that'd be great. On this, on this public hearing, any other councils wish to speak? Okay, hearing and seeing none, we'll close that side of the hearing. So we, this is able to be voted on this evening, Council Powers? If it's, if it's good with you, we'd like to vote on this this evening.
I have no objection. It's a twenty-foot extension from a pole to a property, and it's underground. As long as it's, they take a license, et cetera, whatever has to be done, we're all set.
Thank you. Madam Clerk.
Shall the city council grant the petition of National Grid to install underground service from one hundred Lancaster Avenue to pole number one four six one? Council Benito?
Yes.
Yes, Council Guanasso?
Yes.
Voting yes. Council McKenna?
Yes.
Yes, Council Morabito?
Yes.
Yes, Council Novoselfski?
Yes.
Yes, Council Powers?
Yes.
Yes, Council Rotendo is absent. Council Sereno?
Yes.
Yes, Council Visconti?
Yes.
Yes, Council Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes, and Council President Keefe?
Yes.
Yes, the petition has been granted.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Next item on the agenda is calendar item number seven. Hearing called is ordered on the application of Brad Street LLC care of Paul Bonfiglio, Twenty Wing Road, Linfield, Mass, seeking permission from the Revere City Council to alter an existing non-conforming four-unit structure by increasing the number of units to six and by reducing the number of bedrooms on lot eleven at eighty-three Brad Street Avenue.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. This is a public hearing. We're going to open it up to proponents and opponents. Then we'll go to the council. This is going to be referred to zoning on Fourteenth at five thirty. So if you can all just realize that that'll be discussed even for. Any proponents in the audience wishing to speak? Timothy Howells?
Council Keefe, the applicant is here. Mr. Bonfiglio?
Oh, Mr. Bonfiglio. I assume you're a proponent?
He is on as a panelist. He's getting his video. There he goes.
Okay.
Good evening, councilors. Thank you for hearing me tonight.
Name and address, Paul?
Paul Bonfiglio, Twenty Wing Road, Linfield, Massachusetts. And before you tonight, requesting a special permit for an existing non-conforming use from four units, looking, requesting for six units. In this process, we have worked closely with the ward counselor and the neighbors. We had had several meetings with the neighbors, the director butters several times, and then we had a community meeting inviting everybody who was within, say, two hundred, three hundred yards of the house on all directions. We currently, the house as it stands is a four-unit building comprised of three, four-bedroom units and one one-bedroom unit. We are looking to change the use to six units, but reducing the bedrooms down to nine bedrooms total.
Thank you. Any other proponents? Any other proponents in the audience? We see Timothy Howells. Timothy, you got unmute.
Okay, how's that?
Very good. Thank you.
Okay, I am a butter at eighty-eight Brad Street Ave. I've lived here since nineteen eighty-seven. My in-laws bought this house in nineteen forty-five. Irregardless, the property at eighty-eight, or eighty-three Brad Street Ave, since the mid nineties, has been a source of constant irritation. It was basically, you had three units with four bedrooms. It was basically a rooming house. And the, the owner had no wish to address any of the issues. I am in favor of Mr. Bonfiglio's plan because now you're going to have six units of condominiums. The owners have a little bit of skin in the game. And it also reduces the bedrooms from, I think it was twelve to nine. The only issue that we have as butters was parking. And we worked with Joanne and Paul to try to get around that. How that's going to work, I'm not sure, but I am definitely in favor of this proposal.
Thank you very much. Any other proponents wishing to speak in the audience? Hearing and seeing none, we're going to close that side of the hearing. Any opponents wishing to speak? Hearing and seeing none, we're going to close that side of the hearing. Any councils? Council McKenna?
You're on mute. I'm not having a good night tonight. I've been working with Paul for the last year and a half and the neighbors. We've had some community meetings. Paul has gone to every single house that abuts this property. This property has been a menace to Beachmont for the last six years that I've been a counselor. And before that, it was in horrible shape, complaints from the neighbors all the time. The person that owned it was getting fined. Finally, they, they took the house. There were so many fines, they took the house away. I think it went into foreclosure and Paul went in to all the neighbors first and said, look, I want to rehab this house and I want to put six units in it with less bedrooms. The biggest problem there, because it's Brad Street Ave, it was the parking. So we came up with a solution that we would have one car per condo. So that would be six cars for six units. And he agreed to that and went to Ashley, and Ashley thought that was a great idea. So I'm totally in favor of this. If you see the plan of what he's going to do to rehab this, it's going to be beautiful. It's going to bring more wealth to the neighborhood. The property, the property values of everybody's house will go up because this is just such an eyesore to the neighborhood. So I'm totally in favor of this. He was great to work with, and thank you very much.
Thank you, counselor. Any other councils wishing to speak? Council Gino?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to speak as a proponent of this as well. I'm glad that Mr. Bonfiglio was able to work with the ward counselor to get all the residents' concerns addressed. But he's been a part of this community, and his family has been a part of this community for longer than I have. And I know that any project that he's a part of will be a class act project, so I look forward to seeing this, and I think it's going to be a great improvement for the community and the street. Thank you.
Thank you, counselor. Council Morabito? Steve, oh gosh.
I thought I was going to go a whole meeting without muting myself. But.
But Mr. Bonfiglio has been active in this community for years. Not only does he have a funeral parlor in the city, he was a city counselor. So he knows more, just as we do, how important it is to listen to the people and hear what they have to say. And that's exactly what he did. He worked with the Ward Counselor, and he worked with the neighbors to see what they wanted to do. And he made the adjustments. Not only is, as Counselor McKenna said, he's going, he's only going to have one parking spot per unit, which is less than what the city requires. So he's more than willing to work with the people in that neighborhood. And that's all you can ask for anyone who's looking to rehab a building. So I am in favor of this project. So that's all I have right now.
Councilor Guanasso, then Zambudo, then Visconti?
Thank you, Mr. President. All I can say is that Paul Bonfiglio and his family have been major stockholders in Ward Three. They've had their business in Ward Three forever and a day. And they're well-respected and regarded by the neighborhood. And certainly, every opportunity he has to help the neighborhood, he does. And he also does one thing better. He employs some of the neighborhood and puts people to work and puts food on their table. So he's mindful of the fact that, you know, you have to share wealth, and you have to share your responsibilities, and he's doing that. And he's a good neighbor, and I'd be very, very happy and strongly support this effort.
Thank you. Councilor Zambudo, then Visconti?
Thank you, Mr. President. Obviously, Paul Bonfiglio and the family, the reputation precedes them. I mean, they are first-class, first... They are what Revere wants. In this situation, Paul's a developer, but, you know, he was a city counselor. He knows what to do, goes before the neighborhood, gets together with the Ward Counselor, works this all out before it comes before us. This is what we'd love to see before the council. The details carefully gone over and making sure... You can't always have everybody happy, but most everybody in the neighborhood happy of the improvements. So I'm looking forward to this coming to my zoning committee to work out any other minor details. But I want to congratulate Joanne McKenna, of course, the Ward Counselor, and the developer for all the work they've put in and the neighbors. So I'm thrilled to see this kind of a project go forward. And we'll see, we'll go over the final details in my zoning subcommittee. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor.
Councilor Visconti, then Powers?
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to congratulate Mr. Bonfiglio on investing in our community. We tend to forget that, you know, rebuilding and developing units like this takes money, okay? And it takes taking a chance. And it's great to see that you're investing in our community. You're a class act, as always. You've done your due diligence with Counselor McKenna. So I am a proponent of this and looking to see this come in front of the zoning committee. I look forward to this happening and following through. Congratulations, and I am in support of this. Thanks.
Thank you, Counselor. Councilor Powers?
Thank you, Mr. President. I've had a chance to look over the drawings for the proposed building. I've listened to the Ward Counselor. And believe me, if there's something wrong with a project, Joanne McKenna would be the first one to go over it. And she's right out there working for her constituency. I had about, oh, I don't know, maybe 12, 14 years ago, I had a call from Paul Bonfiglio about a piece of property down on Revere Street that was vacant.
Counselor?
And on target, keeping his words, his commitments regarding parking, the layout of the building, and the size of the units, the whole line yet. So I certainly, based on the experience I've had with him, I will be supporting this this evening. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor.
And, you know, what else can I say? I think everyone's going to be very much in support. I look forward to seeing this happen, come to zoning. I've seen the current condition of the property, and it certainly is deplorable. So we look forward to an updated site over there. Thank you.
I want to thank you all very much for your time tonight. And I especially want to thank Joanne for all the time that she put in, meeting with the neighbors and helped us all facilitate and get to where we are today. Thank you.
Thank you. So all in favor of referring this to zoning on 14th at 5:30? It's ordered. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is the zoning subcommittee report.
Counselor Chairman Zambudo?
Thank you, Mr. President. We obviously know the zoning subcommittee met earlier this evening, and we had several items on the agenda. First was an ordinance, further amending the zoning ordinances in the city of Revere relative to kennels. It was a simple change that was brought up by a project that's ongoing now. But in that case, they got a zoning variance that won't be necessary in the future. If it came before us again, it's separated by a highway, so that's what this changes. And it's a simple change, and I think everybody's on board with it. And committee voted out favorably, and I'd ask for a roll call vote on that. Item 20 dash 358.
Madam Clerk?
Counselor, this is an ordinance, and you have to go through the steps to approve.
Order on a second reading? Order on a third and final reading? Roll call for engrossment and ordainment?
Engrossment and ordainment on an ordinance further amending the zoning ordinances of the city of Revere relative to kennels. Councilor Genino? Yes? Councilor Guanasso?
Yes.
Yes? Councilor McKenna?
Yes.
Yes? Councilor Morabito?
Yes.
Yes? Councilor Novoselfski?
Yes.
Yes? Councilor Powers?
Yes.
Yes? Councilor Rotundo is absent. Councilor Sereno?
Yes.
Yes? Councilor Visconti?
Yes.
Yes? Councilor Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes. And Council President Keith?
Yes.
Yes, the ordinance is engrossed and ordained. Next item?
Next item was number 20 dash 373, a petition of Squire Road Realty LLC to amend the zoning map. This item was discussed in full, and it's being voted out favorably from the committee with a deed restriction. Madam Clerk, do you want to add to that?
Yes. Do you want me to read the email, Counselor? The, sorry, the language of the covenant?
Yeah, the deed restriction. Yes, please. I don't have anything.
I just have to pull it up in my email here. Sure. The deed restriction shall be as follows. The land as herein after described shall be used for residential purposes, which shall include the right to construct and have a multifamily dwelling, which shall not consist of more than three dwelling units. Further, the land shall not be used for commercial purposes, and no commercial structure shall be constructed, placed, or otherwise maintained in any matter on the land as herein described, as herein after described.
Right. Roll call. Counselor, this is ordered on a second reading? Order on a third and final reading?
No, this is...
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
And roll call for engrossment and ordainment?
On engrossment and ordainment subject to the deed restriction, Counselor Genino?
Yes.
Yes? Councilor Guanasso?
Yes.
Yes? Councilor McKenna?
Yes.
Yes? Councilor Morabito?
Yes.
Yes? Councilor Novoselfski?
Yes.
Yes? Councilor Powers?
Yes.
Yes? Councilor Rotundo is absent. Councilor Sereno?
Yes.
Yes? Councilor Visconti?
Yes.
Yes? Councilor Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes. And Council President Keith?
Yes.
Yes, the zoning map amendment has been engrossed and ordained subject to the deed restriction.
The third item was 20 dash 375, on the application of Stephen Caruso, trustee for RNS Realty Trust, seeking permission to operate a commercial automotive storage parking business for 910 vehicles, lot 14, 320 Charger Street, Revere, Mass. This was also voted out favorably, and I would call for a roll call on the special permit.
Madam Clerk?
Mr. President? Chairman Zambudo, did you want the findings and conditions of the zoning subcommittee to be read into the record?
Yes, please.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Let me just pull that up in my email. One moment.
Who's dog's barking tonight?
That's Port. He's asking to go out, but I have to do this first. The findings of the subcommittee are as follows. One, the project is located in the Technology Enterprise District in accordance with the Revere zoning map and the Revere revised ordinances. Two, the property identified as Lot 14 Charger Street consists of 372,391 square feet with two non-conforming multiple commercial use structures, the latter which are not in compliance with dimensional setback regulations in accordance with the Revere revised ordinances, Section 1724010 of the Table of Dimensional Regulations respecting the TED district therein. Three, the property's address is 320 Charger Street. The property has frontage of 150 feet on Charger Street, a public way. The property is a complying lot with a minimum lot size exceeding 25,000 square feet, the latter the minimum lot size for the district. The property is presently serviced by municipal water and sewer as well as electricity and gas. The project is in harmony with the other commercial uses in the zoning district as well as the general purpose and intent of the zoning ordinance wherein, A, the project facilities will not impede light, air, and space to adjoining properties; B, the project facilities will not overcrowd or have any effect on the density of the existing parcel and buildings thereon; C, said project facilities shall remain within the site; and D, the approval of this use will allow RNS Realty Trust to improve the condition of the property and therefore benefit the public at large in the community. Five, the property is in appropriate location for the project for the following reasons. A, the project is located in the TED district, which allows for the request of the special permit; B, the property has two non-conforming multiple commercial use structures. Here, the district has various commercial and multifamily residential structures in the neighborhood; and C, the proposed can exist at the property without impeding the normal use of property or surrounding property. Six, that the property has adequate public storage and water facilities and water systems for the following reasons. A, the project facility is on a public way which has water and sewer services. Seven, the project will not adversely affect the neighborhood for the following reasons. A, the project will not create adverse impact of noise, odor, smoke, or dust; B, the project shall not substantially generate commercial traffic or activity; and C, the project does not deviate or substantially change the character of this already relative commercial industrial area of the city, which has an existing wide gamut of commercial industrial enterprises. Eight, the project will have a potential fiscal impact consisting of additional jobs, excise tax revenue, real estate revenue, and licensing fees. Nine, the project, which has no access to the general public, will not cause a nuisance or serious hazard with respect to existing vehicle and pedestrian use in the neighborhood, wherein the traffic generated by the project facility shall not substantially affect the existing traffic patterns of the neighborhood. Ten, adequate and appropriate facilities will be provided in concert with the project for the following reasons. The property is in the TED district. The project, a commercial automotive storage parking business, shall complement the economic uses of the area where various businesses exist. The project is in harmony with this district, which includes two public storage facilities, a large shopping center, the corporate office and maintenance repair facility for a national waste disposal company, two physical fitness gyms, and several residential apartment facilities. Also, the current utilities, infrastructure, and roadways meet existing requirements of this industrial and business area. And finally, eleven, that project is determined by this council to have beneficial effects that outweigh the detrimental effects on the city and the neighborhood in view of the particular characteristics of the property and the project in relation to the property. Further, the site plan review conditions have been added as part of this decision, if approved.
Actually, Counselor Novoselfski, do you have something to say?
No, my question was the answer. Thank you.
Okay, wonderful. Okay. Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Roll call to grant the relief requested by the applicant subject to the findings and conditions of site plan review. Counselor Genino?
Yes.
Yes? Councilor Guanasso?
Yes.
Yes? Councilor McKenna?
Yes.
Yes? Councilor Morabito?
Yes.
Yes? Councilor Novoselfski?
Yes.
Yes? Councilor Powers?
Yes.
Yes? Councilor Rotundo is absent. Councilor Sereno?
Yes.
Yes? Councilor Visconti?
Yes.
Yes? Councilor Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes. And Council President Keith?
Yes.
Yes, the special permit has been granted subject to the findings and conditions of site plan review.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, Madam Clerk. Thank you. Is that all? Counselor Zambudo?
There was one other item on the agenda but was withdrawn from National Grid. So that concludes the zoning subcommittee report. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Next up, we have Counselor Guanasso on the appointment subcommittee report.
Thank you, Mr. President. Earlier this afternoon, the appointment subcommittee met. We had 14 names put before the zoning board of the appointments subcommittee. We voted on 13 of those appointees. One appointee, 20 dash 390, appointment of Farah Sheik to the Cultural Council, was placed on the table, but non-appearance is part of our rules of order. First, 20 dash 385, appointment of Brian Vesey to Disability Commission. And 20 dash 386, appointment of Toby Pearlstein to the Library Board of Trustees. 2387, appointment of Deborah Gormires to the Cultural Council. 2388, appointment of Fatou Germain to the Revere Housing Authority. 20 dash 389, appointment of Kathy Penn to the Planning Board. Appointment 20 dash 391, appointment of Osama Afudu to the Disability Commission. 20 dash 392, appointment of Brendan O'Brien to the Cultural Council. 20 dash 393, appointment of Catherine Days to the Cultural Council. 20 dash 394, appointment of Quinn Lee to the Cultural Council. 20 dash 395, appointment of Stephanie Caverlo to the Library Board of Trustees. 20 dash 396, appointment of Yacina Arango to the Cultural Council. 20 397, appointment Al Baker to the Historical Commission. 20 398, appointment of Jason Verone to the Disability Commission. Mr. President, all of those were voted out favorably by the appointment subcommittee, and I ask the City Council to do the same. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Roll call.
Shall the City Council confirm the appointments as reported by Chairman Guanasso? Counselor Genino?
Yes.
Yes? Councilor Guanasso?
Yes.
Yes? Councilor McKenna?
Yes.
Yes? Councilor Morabito?
Yes.
Yes? Councilor Novoselfski?
Yes.
Yes? Councilor Powers?
Yes.
Yes? Councilor Rotundo is absent. Councilor Sereno?
Yes.
Yes? Councilor Visconti?
Yes.
Yes? Councilor Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes. And Council President Keith?
Yes.
Yes, the appointments have been confirmed. Calendar item number twenty-six, communication from the mayor concerning an intermeniscule agreement for the establishment of the North Suffolk Office of Resilience and Sustainability.
Any councilors wishing to speak on this motion? Or this communication?
President Keith, Al Baker is here to address the council.
Hi, Al, how are you?
Hi, Councilors. I just wanted to join you, just in case anybody had any questions, or if you want a brief overview of the North Suffolk Office of Resiliency and Sustainability.
Any councilors?
If she can give a brief overview of what it is, it'd be helpful.
Absolutely. So, the North Suffolk Office of Resiliency and Sustainability has been a work in collaboration between the City of Revere, the City of Chelsea, and the City of Winthrop, in collaboration also with MAPC. And this is a great opportunity for the city to unlock approximately six hundred thousand dollars of funding from the BAR Foundation. As we are all well aware, Revere is faced with some severe coastal resiliency challenges on many fronts around the city. And we're currently embarked on three separate studies to produce some recommendations for what we can do to move forward, and as well as, we've been working on sustainability efforts to figure out the best ways for energy efficiency and to reduce waste throughout the city. So with those efforts in mind with just Revere, to be able to join together with two other communities and to create more bandwidth and to work together regionally will give us a lot more manpower, as well as a lot more focus, and a lot more support when we seek grant opportunities to move some of these initiatives forward for Revere, as well as Chelsea and Winthrop. So the proposal is basically a collaboration of three communities. The office lead is Chelsea, so the new employees, which would be two new employees, one for resiliency, one for sustainability, would be located in Chelsea, but we would also like to support that they would have space to visit in Revere, as well as Winthrop, so that they can make connections with the community, and also to focus on separate initiatives that are not perhaps regional, but maybe just specific to Revere. The collaboration, as I said, has been going on for probably close to eight months to a year now throughout our COVID situation, so the proposal would be to support the office for about three and a half years, and that would be the first, sort of the first commitment. And with that, through the years twenty-one, twenty-one, twenty-twenty-one and twenty-twenty-two, that would be fully supported by the BAR Foundation, kicking in in year twenty-twenty-three. Each community would participate in supporting these two staff members up to year three and a half, at which time it would automatically renew unless a community would like to stop their participation. So as I said, logistics would be that these particular staff members would be located in the Chelsea office, but we would like to provide some sort of support to at least have the employees come to Revere perhaps once a week, or whatever, it seems to be established that would work best for all the communities or the workloads that are going on. But I guess the real bottom line is this is a great opportunity for us to have regional representation, as well as to increase our bandwidth within the Planning Department and other departments in the city to increase resiliency and sustainability. So it's really a win for all of us, so I hope that you consider supporting this.
Thank you.
I can just ask a question through you, Mr. President. Does this mean the first commitment is really at no cost to the city, is that correct?
There's a little cost to the city, but that wouldn't be realized until twenty-twenty-three. So the first two years are fully supported. Calendar year twenty-twenty-one into calendar year twenty-twenty-two, and then I believe it's like about halfway through twenty-twenty-three, we start at the fiscal year beginning, we would be looking to offer some financial support to pay these staff members. It wouldn't be a hundred percent support. I believe the first year is roughly eighty percent that we would contribute, not year one, but year and a half. And then
Okay, great, thank you.
Terminally, from there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Get the office started under current financial constraints.
I'm all set, Mr. President, thank you.
Thank you. Any of the councilors?
Ms. Baker, I just, I did have a few questions, and I spoke to the mayor about it, asked him some questions, which were thoroughly answered, but my concerns, I guess not concerns, I think this sounds like a really great, great idea, in working with the neighboring towns will help spread out some of the costs. But going into the costs, you know, I just wanted to, I was curious if this was going to become a budget item at some point, but certainly won't be in the first two years, correct?
Correct, not in the first two years, but I assume it will be a budget item following that.
Okay, and then I just, I did have some questions about the hiring practices that would fall behind there. Obviously, you have three towns looking to bring someone, or actually probably two people on, and what would the requirements be? You know, who's going to have the final say? Is this going to be decided by a board? And then, you know, is this going to be a primary role for someone, or is this going to be a secondary role for someone? Whereas I think that this is an important role, and looking at the money that's going to be put into this position, or these two positions, I don't feel like this would be something that should be taken on as a part-time or side role, because I just don't think it'll get the attention it deserves. So my curiosity, is this going to be a full-time role for someone or two people?
Counselor Keith, yes, it would be a full-time role, and it's two separate positions, one for resiliency, one for sustainability, that would work closely together under support in any way. Their role would be to support each municipality somewhat equally, depending on what the project load is. Some projects would entail regional efforts, some would be individual efforts. So Revere, for example, we have the MVP project going on. We would be able to gain some support and some bandwidth, should that employee be on board at that time. In regards to hiring, it would be a collaborative effort to spearhead and to identify and agree on the actual job description for each of the individuals. We've put forth some of our major objectives to the collaborating group, as have Chelsea and Winthrop. And to answer your question in regards to board, so yes, there will be a board, and the membership would be, each municipality has one seat on the board. The city's chief administrative officer could appoint a department head, or be that person, he or she, to himself or herself. The policies and procedures would be agreed on and established by the board, which would be a collaboration of all three cities and towns. The office staff would only be hired upon the agreement of the board. And the board meetings would be held in accordance with the open meeting laws. The board meetings would be guided by Robert's rules, and the minutes would be recorded and available to the public.
Thank you, thank you very much. And Counselor Powers, you have a question?
Yes, I do, Mr. President. Al, what would be the salary range of these two positions that the city would be responsible for down the road?
The salary for each position is roughly seventy-five thousand.
Okay, each?
Yeah. Person per year. And that would be split among three municipalities.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. And just because I know that, thank you, Al, for answering those questions. And I know that the city has entered into some agreements in the past with neighboring towns. Sometimes they've worked out, and we're currently in a few with Board of Health, which has been very fruitful. This one being taken on by Chelsea would be the lead. They would incur some of those costs, and obviously having the staff members on their premise, you know, whether it's, you know, office supplies, etc., so that would be a little bit off the back from us. But there is a six-month out, so no municipality can exit this without without a six-month notice.
Correct.
Whereas before, there has been agreements, and some municipalities haven't lived up to those, you know, when it comes to like the rec center, they have opted out without giving much notice or any notice at all. So there is a six-month clause, which I thought because it gives everyone a chance to reassess what they would want to do, rather than having someone just leave the agreement. So I think that's a good piece in this agreement. So, any other questions? Okay, I want to call the roll, Madam Clerk.
Shall the City Council approve the agreement between the City of Revere and the intermeniscule agreement for the establishment of resilience and sustainability? Counselor Janino?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Guanasso?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor McKenna?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Morabito?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Novoselski?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Rotundo is absent, Counselor Serino?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Visconti?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Zambudo? Counselor Zambudo is absent. Council President Keith?
Yes.
Yes, the agreement has been approved.
Thank you, Counselor.
Good work.
Next up is motions. Calendar item number twenty-seven, motion presented by Counselors Serino and McKenna.
Mr. President? I'm sorry, I was out of the room. I wanted to vote yes.
Thank you. Madam Clerk?
In the room.
It's, it's, the vote has already been, it's already been ordered.
Oh, okay, no problem. I can be absent.
Sorry. Calendar item number twenty-seven, motion presented by Counselors Serino and McKenna that the mayor instruct the chiefs of the cabinet to notify ward counselors ahead of work being done either by the City of Revere or its agents, when a project is happening in their respective wards throughout the city.
Counselor McKenna? Counselor Serino?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm going to let the motion speak for itself. Thank you.
Counselor McKenna, good.
I'll second that, yes, thank you.
Speak for itself. Counselor Novoselski?
I'm good.
Oh, you're waving at me?
No, I was waving at myself.
All right. All right, all in favor? So ordered.
Calendar item number twenty-eight, motion presented by Counselors Serino and Keith that the City Council award local business owners Paul and Roseanne Musto a certificate of appreciation on the occasion of their retirement. For sixty-five years, the Musto family has owned and operated China Roma, a staple on Broadway in our community, as it employed many Revere residents over the last nearly seven decades.
Counselor Serino?
Thank you, Mr. President. I will let this one speak for itself as well, and save comments for a night we present it. Thank you.
Thank you, and yes, we can present this and have them on at a future meeting that serves everyone well. All in favor? So ordered.
Calendar item number twenty-nine, motion presented by Counselor Serino that the mayor request the police department to patrol Breeden's Lane in North River near the intersection of Morris Street between the hours of nine-thirty a.m. and ten-thirty a.m. on weekday mornings to enforce the no heavy trucks traffic rule. This has been an ongoing issue with delivery trucks from Cappy's Liquors that are exiting Cappy's via the neighborhood instead of utilizing Route One.
Counselor Serino?
Thank you, Mr. President. So here we have a bad neighbor. Cappy's obviously is not in Revere, it's actually in Malden, but their delivery trucks are coming up through that back roadway and causing a bit of trouble for North River residents, and they're speeding through. I've called, I've taken the liberty, before I asked to have police intervene, I called Cappy's and I spoke with two managers on two occasions. They both assured me that this wouldn't happen again, and then the next day more trucks came down, and I do have video from neighbors on Breeden's Lane. So just asking the police to enforce that no trucks and hit them in their pocketbook, if that's the only way they're going to listen and learn. So thanks, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other councilors? So I mean, Counselor Serena, I just wanted to mention that I agree with you. There's actually a couple roads, and I don't want to go too long on this, but I've been seeing some Amazon large tractor trailers on some of our public streets that don't belong. So I guess if we could just send the message out to the Revere Police Department to help enforce those city laws when it comes to large vehicles, because you can call Cappy's, and I can tell you right now that they don't want, they don't want to see these trucks. It's the distributors that are not paying attention. Thank you. All in favor of the motion? So ordered.
Calendar item number thirty, motion presented by Counselor Serino that the mayor instruct National Grid to add streetlights to poll numbers three ninety, I'm sorry, thirty-nine sixty to fifty and thirty-nine sixty-one to fifty on Salem Street, opposite Overlook Ridge Drive, further than immediately and in the interim, that National Grid brighten the LED lights on poll numbers three six, thirty-nine sixty-one, thirty-nine sixty-two, and thirty-nine sixty-three in the same area due to the dangerousness of the curve and darkness.
Counselor?
Thank you, Mr. President. So if you're driving on Salem Street, heading towards Saugus and Lincoln Ave, anyone who lives in North River and is coming to and from Linden Square, going through that that dangerous curve called Sully's Curve, will know that right now it's really dark and treacherous, and two of these poles that I'm asking National Grid to install the lights on, those are two of the poles that they went ahead and installed on Salem Street without our approval. So let's make them useful and put some lights to brighten up that area that I kind of see as a danger right now. And I spoke with Counselor Novoselski, who's the Chair of Public Works, and Counselor, I did not have a chance to take your advice to go out there, but I will to try to get the wattage information to make sure that we brighten the wattage of those three particular lights. But once we send us to National Grid, I can talk with Dan Cameron and work out the details. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor McKenna?
Thank you, Mr. President. I think this is a problem throughout the whole city. I think we've talked to Dan Cameron a number of times when he outsourced the company to do the LED lights. They didn't put them in the right place. We have Winthrop Ave in Beauchamp that is, you know, people are going up the street, it's very, very dark. We need to change the wattage. I've asked him a number of times. I've even put it in three-one-one, and it hasn't been changed yet. He said when the work was done, they would change the wattage if we put it in three-one-one, or we gave them a list. That hasn't happened, and the work has been done for over six months now. So I think we really need to get on him. I know you have a problem, but I think all of the ward councilors have problems in their wards, so I think we need to bring him in and make him accountable. We need to make National Grid accountable for changing these lights. I mean, I probably have maybe two dozen, and that's it. I don't think it's a hard chore to do, so that's my voice on that. But I think we should hold him accountable, definitely.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Novoselski?
Come on, okay. Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, I've been working with people from National Grid to do this, and through three-one-one. And Nick Ramato has put together an Excel spreadsheet that he gives to National Grid on a weekly basis. Unfortunately, this time of year, with all the weather, everybody's outsourced to where all the, around one-twenty-eight, four-ninety-five. So right now, they don't have the people to change lights. I have had a few changes around my neighborhood, but I still have about ten to twelve that have to be hit. Now Shirley Ave, they only put twenty-five watt LEDs, and people are complaining constantly, and I've requested that all the poles and all the lights on Shirley Ave up to Wall and Ave be increased from twenty-five watt to forty-eight watt. So, and I suggested that to Counselor Serino and his Ben, where some can be larger than the others based on what neighbors are existing, what residents are existing on these lights. So I know it's terrible everywhere, but we have to keep going through three-one-one. Unfortunately, Dan is a liaison, and all the, he's the middle guy. And we can scream and yell at him all we want, but if his operations department doesn't listen to him, you know, we're just blowing wind. But, uh, I have told him I have not, I have not been happy with the lighting system that they put in and how they determine it. None of the counselors in the city of Revere were even. Requested to have talked to them. About what they thought what light should be where. They went through this private consultants. And I told them that I thought they did a lousy job. And I still stand there and I tell Dan that all the time. He tries to protect them, but unfortunately, you know, that's his job. So what's do is say to you is, you know, everybody is be patient. They will get to it. As soon as they can at this point, so. I say be with them. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor. Uh, and Council Sereno, uh, Ira, Ira mentioned, uh, working with Nick, uh, Nick Romano. He was very helpful. He's helping sort of triage the, the full city list. And, uh, put the, uh, high priorities up front. So. I, I definitely agree, this should be sent to, uh, his office as well and, and he'll help. All in favor on the motion?
Aye.
So ordered.
Calendar item number thirty one, motion presented by Counselor Keith. That the mayor request the assessor's office to coordinate with the building department relative to home assessments. Many homes throughout the city are being assessed as multifamilies. When the homes are listed as single or two families with the building department. The systems used by the assessor's office and the building department need to be cross referenced. To eliminate confusion and unfairly taxed residents.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I see we have Dana Brancaforte, uh, from the assessor's office. Um. Are you, uh, did you want to address this right up front or did you want to, I mean, I answer some questions as they come?
Um, I could do both, whatever the pleasure of the council is.
Sure. Well, um, any councils wanting to speak on this or did you want me to take the lead?
The motion.
So, uh, thank you. So everyone knows, and, and this isn't a slight on, on the assessor's office or the building department. Or anyone for that matter, everyone, you know, does their job and does it very well. But as you know, Dana, um, we, we get a lot of calls from, um, it's usually when someone's trying to sell their home. Um, that they realize their, uh, what they thought was a two family is actually a one. Uh, it causes confusion. Um, and then this, the same old, uh, story comes up and, um, they. They say I've been taxed. As a two family for twenty years, thirty years, ten years, you know, because they look at their tax bill. No one, no one probably really looks up there. Um, what, what their home is listed on in the building code. Um, so I think, and again, I know this, this can't happen overnight. I, I understand that. We can't just. You know, wave the magic wand and have it change. But I, I really think we have to invest in some sort of software or system to, uh, uh, cross reference. This, the prop, all the properties in City Revere, especially the ones that, uh, you know, not categorized right, so. Um, it, basically, I would say anything over one family in, in the billing department. And cross reference it with the tax bill and so that it, it correlates. And so that means. And, and I get it. So if, if a house is truly a one family by the billing department. But their tax bill says it's a two family because we recognize on their inspection or assessment. That it has extra rooms, it has extra space. So, um, I just think that it needs to be taxed. You know, regardless of the use, if the use is illegal, that's a whole nother story. That, then, then, then that's when you get inspection services involved. Third leg of the, uh, correlation, but I just think for our. The integrity of our tax bills, the integrity of our, of our assessments, it helps. And it also reduces confusion down the road. So I, I don't know if you have, if you know anyone that has software like that. I don't know the software you would use. But, um, I, I would, I think that we need to do it. We are obligated to do it.
Sure, no, I de- definitely understand, uh, where you're coming from. Um, I, I don't know if that software does exist. Um. I don't know of a city or town, uh, that does do that. Um, you know, I guess I'm kinda here. I wanted to give a little background, a little, a little bit of, uh. Kind of how we address, you know, assessing homes and, and what our job is as assessors, you know. Basically, we go out, we have to, by law, we have to classify a property. So we have to put a use code on it, uh, whether it be single family, two family, three family, whatever that is. So we have to pick a code that. Most closely identifies, you know, what that property is and what it's being used as, not necessarily what it legally is. Um, because we're not concerned with that, you know, that's, that's not what our duty is. So. We go out, if we see two kitchens in a property, we see two apartments there, we see two units, we're gonna call it a two family. Um. Now, again, like you said, the billing department may only recognize it as a legal, single family house. And in most cases, like, like you just referenced, you know, that's, that's a whole different animal. With the, with the illegal apartment issue, but when we get these phone calls, as you do, you know, if you're getting five a month, we're, we're probably getting, you know, fifty a month. Um, but when we get them and people do go to sell their houses when it happens, you know, that's. When we and the billing department address it and, and, and make it correct, whether. The person has to pull that unit out or whether they have to bring it up to code and legalize it, you know, that, that's when it's being addressed. Um. So again, to bring it back for us and for what we're looking for, we're looking for what it's used as, you know, what exists, you pay taxes on what exists. Whether it's legal or not legal, you know, people can look up, you know, the assessors, uh, records, all public record online. In the office, they can check that on anytime. We encourage everybody to check that out because, you know, we want them to be correct and we want it to be right. Um. But as far as legality goes, it's not as easy to do that, you know, it's the, this, the billing department and Louis can speak to that. I don't want to speak for him. But they don't have a system where you can go up and look your, you know, your occupancy. There has to be. A hand, hand done research, you know, by the clerks. And in most instances, if it's an older property, a hundred years old, or, you know, even fifty, sixty, seventy years old, those records don't exist, so. They then rely on the assessors' records and we go back and forth and, and we try to reconcile that. So we definitely do that on an ongoing basis, uh, on a rolling basis. As, as the cases come in, you know, we try to reconcile those and, and make it correct. Um, but at the end of the day, if that second apartment does exist. Whether it's legal or not, you know, you, you're gonna pay taxes on it and, and rightfully so.
Right. Right. So, and, uh, Council Novoselfski.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, uh, I've, I've been dealing with this. You know, twenty years, the last twenty years plus years before that. And basically, you know, we, the city hires Patriot Property to do some of our assessments. And the, the base rule is what you see is what you get. Now, if somebody bought a house that they thought was a two family and it's only registered as a one. Now that's the broker's fault for not doing their due diligence.
Right.
In following up an deed in the city, city records.
Right.
So. The building department has what they have. That means somewhere down the line. Somebody in that house made it a two family house without going through building permits. So technically. Technically, they're illegal, but, you know, we, you know, we let them go. We don't try and make them close them unless they want to try and correct it. Then they have to bring it up to code, electrical, fire. And everything else that has to be done to make it right. They need a proper egresses. So, you know, it, it's a very tough situation, you know, if Dana wants to go out and look and see if there's a. A, a program out there that can put everything together. Fine, you know, it'll give all, it won't allow, relieve anything from the city. They're still gonna have to charge the people two family help, uh, taxes.
Right.
But those people will now have a chance to upgrade. To a two family and we've gone through that through the city council. You know, increasing from a one to a two.
Sure, many times.
And they've gone through ZBA at times.
Right.
So. You know, it's a difficult thing. I don't mind supporting this, but I just want everybody to know that, you know, this is a long, long, long.
It provides, yeah, there's a lot of hurdles to get through.
Right, so the, the, you know, and I, I, I know it's, uh, good that we have a few. The councils wish to speak. I also see, uh, Luke Cavarno, uh, sorry if I'm butchering your name, I apologize. Um. He's from the building department, which he could be helpful as well, but I just want to kind of remind everyone here, uh, think about the, uh. Uh, the, the some pump, uh, uh, program that we had years ago and a much smaller scale, but. We offered almost an amnesty program. Um, there was some, there was some, uh. Collaboration involved. It didn't happen overnight. It took years, but it was a program that. We, we, they helped identify and correct issues because at the end of the day, yes, for years, people were pumping water out of their basement or. Draining illegally, uh, into the sewer system without paying for it. So. I, again, I don't want to see, uh, homes getting torn up. I don't want to see us going in and busting doors down and making, um. A woman or a family that, uh, has had an in-law apartment in their basement, as you know, Revere has a lot of in-law apartments. A lot of, uh, a lot of Revere, they call them Revere twos for a reason. Uh, and they have kitchens down there where, you know, as I remember, grandma went and made her Sunday gravy downstairs. So. The last thing I want to do is start seeing everyone upset that, but I do think that, uh, and I want to give everyone a chance to speak, but. We have an obligation to, you know, clarify this because it looks better, it's easy, you know. Maybe it's not gonna be fixed in two years, but I can tell you that it's not something that we should really have to, want to be dealing with ten years from now. So.
Well, that's exactly the case, Counsel. You know, we're, we're living today with the sins of, of, you know, a lo- a long time ago, the history, you know, of the city, so. You know, that, that's where we stand today with the issues that we're dealing with.
So I see Lou is on and Lou, if you can help us print out, I'm, I'm sorry, let me help. I, I, I just got Brancaforte, it took me four years, so. What do you got?
Okay, so I gotta unmute myself. Uh, so. We want to get this, this fixed, you know, just as much as you do because we get as. We probably get two people a day that come to the building department and ask us, why am I being assessed as this way? But it's really this way, so, um. I want to get this done just as much as you do. Um. There's just, there's a lot that goes into it, um, with the files. There's all these old permits that. Um, go back to the eighteen nineties that we have to look up and, um. It's just, it's just a long process. Um, so I just want to let you guys know that. Um. I think it's a good idea and we do do them right now as it comes in on a case by case basis. Um. It's just gonna take a long time to get every single property in Revere. So in order.
Great. Great. Council Guanasso and then Council Morbido.
Well, I just wanted to add that, that years ago, that used to be true, that, uh, a lot of families had, uh, an in-law. And it truly wasn't in-law. And what happened was, uh, they, and they kept it and they cooked downstairs, they maintained downstairs. But the truth be said now is that a lot of people are renting out these units. So the only time it becomes a major problem is when they go to sell it. They've been driving this income all these years from this illegal apartment. And now all of a sudden, it becomes a, a major catastrophe because they can't sell it as a two family and get more money for it. So there, there's a two street way on this and, and I, and I think years ago, that was true. But I think things have changed quite drastically and then the mindset in the last five to six years, people are renting them out. And there's, they're, they're driving, they're receiving income from that. And, uh. So we have to be careful of that also. Thank you, President.
Thank you. Council Morbido.
So as a railter, uh, let, let me talk about my experience. So. I think where the confusion is, so if a house was built as a three family originally, um, and it's in the assessors book. That's usually the go-to. It's usually if they, if it was built as a three family, two family, um. That's usually the case. In the building department will usually be a two family or three family. Uh, where the problem runs into is in-law apartments or if someone does work, if someone. Does work on their house and does not pull a permit. Any time in which they're living in that house, if you go to sell that house. And you go for a smoke certificate or if you go to, um. Sell that house. They make you bring everything up to code. So if your house is a, uh, in-law, you have to bring everything up to code if you've never pulled a permit before. Is that correct, Louis?
Yeah, that's correct. If you, so if, if you, if the house is built as a single family. And there's a second unit in the house or a second kitchen that they never pull permits for, then they have to pull permits to legalize it.
Right.
If they haven't done it in the past, what, what they ma- what the bu- building department and fire department makes the seller do, they makes, they make them. Bring everything up to, um, code. So say for instance, if your house wasn't hardwired, say if you had a fire, uh, smoke. Smoke system, right? Smoke detector system that, um, was illegally placed, right? If you never pulled a permit this day, in the past, this day and age. You would have, the fire department would make you bring everything up to code, so you would have to hardwire it if it was like a two family.
Right. Thank you. Thank you, Counselor. Council Zambudo. You. Tony. He's probably saying really nice stuff right now, too.
Tony, you're on mute. You're on mute, Tony. Tony, you're on mute.
I know you like to be better on mute, but, so. Listen, I think it's a great motion, uh, Mr. President, uh, but. You know, I've dealt a lot with Lou in the building department and he's terrific. He's completely responsive. And, 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 and really bends over backwards to, to help people. But he's gonna need, need a lot more help i- if we're gonna implement this. It, it, it's, it's not an easy task. Uh, you know, I, I've dealt with a lot of people that are trying to make these things legit, that, that have been legit two families. Except there's missing permits and, and, you know, they've been there for years and they've been, uh, assessed that and everything. This, it's gonna take a lot of work. I mean, and you, you know, you've got some great people, Dana and, and, and Lou. But they're gonna need extra help and as long as we understand that, then, then we have a chance at getting it done right, but, uh. It's, it's not gonna be an easy task.
Council Powers. Thank you, Counselor.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, there's another situation involved where. The house may be advertised as a two family. It's not legal. Fellow goes out to look at the house. Goes to the bank for mortgage. They ask for his income. They say, you don't qualify because your income is not, uh, high enough to satisfy, uh, the, the payments of that mortgage. So then he turns around and he says, well, I have an apartment downstairs. I want to include that income. Okay, the apartment's illegal. The bank may, will probably say to him, we'll go to the building department and get a certificate of occupancy to prove that that is a legal apartment. He'll go to the building department and they, they, they can pick it up right away and say, hey, listen, uh. We've, we've got this address, let's look at it. It's not a legal apartment. Uh, and I want to say Louis is doing a fantastic job there and catching these things. I know of several that have been, uh. Uh, knocked out because then they weren't legal. They weren't legal. And then there are others that may have been there for years and they thought they were legal and they never got a certificate. So it's, it's a very delicate situation and like Council Zambudo said, uh. Uh, Louis is gonna need more people down there, uh, to keep these records, to get everything in order and, and find out. Uh, to correspond with the different departments, the assessors, the fire, the police. And, uh, find out exactly what is legal and what isn't. Thank you.
Great. Great. And, and so I guess that, that, that's the, uh, that sums it all up in the sense that. It's, it, we, I don't, I don't think anyone's unrealistic in thinking this because it's gonna change tomorrow and everyone agrees. That both your departments are doing very well with it as the, but it's on a, currently it's on a as it comes in basis, so. Um, again, I don't think we can change this tomorrow, but if we start the foundations, start the conversations, create some guidelines. And put some, uh, energy behind it, you know, we could chip away at this, um, in the next couple of years. I know the fire department would be getting involved in some of the things that they require. So, um, I just think it's a conversation that needs to continue to happen. It's not gonna be easy. Uh, yeah, if it was easy, then everyone would do it, but you know, this is something that I think has to happen, uh, and I would just hope that, um. It's something that, uh, maybe we can get the mayor's office to rally behind and provide you the resources that you need. Right?
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor.
Thank you.
Thanks for being on. All in favor of the motion? So ordered.
There's no further business, Council President?
Um. I had one thing to bring up, if that's all right, counselors, and I'll let you go on your merry way. Uh, just wanted to remind everyone, so if anyone saw, uh, the mayor actually called, uh, myself out in the sense that he wants to. Um, champion, uh, the residents of Revere and his peers, uh, to shop locally. Uh, during this, uh, current pandemic, as you know, Revere businesses, uh, especially small businesses, restaurants, hospitality industry. Have, um, taking it, uh, taking this really hard. So what, what I'd like to do is champion everyone, all my fellow counselors. To think of your favorite, uh, local Revere businesses or even, you know, local within the. local Revere businesses, or even, you know, local within the proximity of what you would consider local, that could use some support, and use, use those businesses to purchase your holiday gifts, whatever holiday you may celebrate. But I want to champion the councillors to, to get out there and support your local business, because if it wasn't for them, we wouldn't be a community. So I would appreciate your support in that. And councillor, councillor Powers, what do you got?
Put in a personal privilege. I'd like to take this opportunity to congratulate Ricky Serino, our colleague, on the fact that we'll be continuing on with, in the office of Jessica Janino as a legislative aide. And that's a good thing, because he has an awful lot of experience, and he does a good job, he did a good job up there for Rosalie Vincent. And I'm sure that work ethic will continue for Representative Janino when she does take office. I know I've called him many times on different issues affecting the ward, and he's always been there 100% to make sure that those issues were corrected. Congratulations, Ricky.
Congratulations. I hope she gives you a raise.
Thank you, councillor. Thank you so much, councillor. That was really nice.
Any other, any other business? Just recognize also, today is the 79th anniversary of D-Day, sorry, of the bombing of Pearl Harbor.
Pearl Harbor, Mr. President.
Corrects. Yes, Pearl Harbor. All right. That, with that being said, we will see you on December 14th for our next regular scheduled meeting.